Good evening. This is Tuesday, April 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And believe it or not, we're really starting on time this time. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video teleconference pursuant to one MRS A, Sections 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely using the information posted on the meeting calendar on city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the website under government/citycouncil/contact the council. Ann, would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now for a moment of silence, please. And roll call, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Council Martel.
Present.
Council Hitchcock.
Present.
Council Trench-Montane.
Present.
Council Hanselman.
Present.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, also present, and our City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Administrator Larissa Ricketts. And now for the minutes, in order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on March 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion, please? Pete?
Motion to accept the minutes.
A second, Nate?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council meeting held March 18th, 2025, do I have a motion? Ann?
So moved.
A second, Pete?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held on March 25th, 2025, do I have a motion, please? Nate?
So moved.
Second, Pete?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. I don't know if you noticed, but if they don't raise their hand, I call on them anyway. All right. So now for the mayor's report. And I have two things that actually pertain to the high school. The first one is if you had the chance to go see Grease over the weekend, phenomenal. The high school did an outstanding job. I found out that there was a young lady who even choreographed the stuff. So it was so enjoyable, I can't even believe it was just high school kids putting this on. It was just amazing. And my husband and I, we go down to Agunkwit a lot, and we go up to Portland and Portsmouth to see the different plays. This was on that caliber play. So if you ever get a chance to see the high school kids performing, please go and see it. It's just amazing. And the other thing, we had an option today, and I'd like to remind people that today is April 1st. And the spot and times, it was quite outstanding. As I'm reading along, I'm finding that Sanford and Massabeasak will be combining schools for 2025-26. I was reading this going, really? And then it was in an attempt to reduce the budget, and I thought these high school kids are quite clever. And not only that, it's going to be renamed. And hopefully I get this right, Safford, Sasseford? Yeah, try to combine that. And they said it was combining the two names. Then they're going to have a new mascot, and it's going to be Sassy the Slug. I thought that was quite clever. And this slug is going to wear a red and green bandana. And not only that, they're going to actually move the high school, so I don't know what they're planning on doing with the high school building we now have, but they're going to do it in the Mills in Sanford, which although they can't actually do any construction until halfway through next year, which is going to require that all the students wear hard hats that will have the slug guy on the front of it. So I thought that that was very clever. And not only that, you should go on their site so you could see this, because they have the best-looking uniforms ever that the kids would be required to wear. And I thought that might be a good idea after seeing what some of the kids wear regularly. So I would vote for that. So partway through, you finally realize, okay, it is April Fool's Day. So I thought they did an outstanding job, you know, with their humor and everything. So if you see any kid who's on the spot and thing times, let them know they did a great job with that one. All right. We had no subcommittees this week, so we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. The first item I'll bring to the council's attention that's not on the agenda tonight is we've opened up contract negotiations with the Sanford Regional Dispatch Center. Mayor Brink has been, has sat with us for the last two opening sessions of that. We're still getting the materials together, so I can bring it to the council for review. It is an interest-based setting. It's been very productive to date, and we're working on the next three-year successor agreement. Comprehensive Plan, our planner Aaron Moriarty will present next meeting on the 15th. She'll present a full update on the Comprehensive Plan as far as where they're at in its development. They will have the contract, as the council has authorized, signed with SMPDC and have the full scope of that, ready for presentation as well. The planning committee met last Wednesday here in the council chambers, and we had a presentation from the Maine Farmlands Trust on means of encouraging the protection of agricultural resources within the city, as well as how it relates to our regional development. Also on the dispatch center, our center administrators continue to work on the county level, at the county level, on the selection and future implementation of a new computer-aided dispatch software package. The current IMC system is going out of support and is inadequate. They are down to a selection between two systems, Motorola, which is named Spillman, or Central Square, which is Pro Suite. The next steps are to do demonstrations with our police departments and the sheriff's department. Followed by just a moment.
Okay, this is where a good dad joke would come in.
Excuse me.
My government is the, they still don't have the cost settled down on both of them.
Didn't have the cost settled down on both of the vendors as of yet, because a lot of it has to do with local hosting versus going cloud-based, as well as conversion of pre-existing databases. Making the council aware, the York County budget, notice has been provided, and it's copied in the report that I sent out to you just earlier today. The York County Budget Committee Chair has stated that on April 9th, the 2025 caucuses to elect municipal and public representatives to membership of the York County Budget Committee will be held at 6:30 PM at the county government building on, at 149 Jordan Springs Road in Alfred. Only elected officials may vote to seat the county seats. There are five districts, each having two municipal, two municipal officials, i.e. elected, and one member from the public. That creates a 15-person committee. Sanford is part of District 4, along with Alfred, Dayton, Limerick, Lyman, and Waterboro. Council Martel is currently an elected official for District 4, and his term does not expire until 3:30 of 27. But there are two vacant elected, there's a vacant elected official and a vacant public member for District 4. So we'll need to have elected officials present at the caucus in order to put those other two seats in. The city did receive, and that's part of the budget consideration tonight, the city did receive a projection, a projection only of the county tax for the next fiscal year. I observed that it's an increase of $149,431, or 15.44%. This increase is comprised of an increased call and taxation, as well as our city's increased percentage of valuation within York County. So I'd encourage strong representation to be there to take action on that projected budget. The last piece that I have, I'm going to bring this up, it should not be political, but it's a matter of public awareness. So every Friday, part of my regime here in the city office, you know, is to go through what happened at the state level for the week, because it greatly impacts our city as far as state revenues and services are concerned. So I noted that on March 21st, a state legislature passed by simple majority an $11.3 billion baseline budget for the next biennium. Governor Mills signed the budget into law on that same day. Further, legislature adjourned, which would allow the budget law to become effective 90 days after its passage and their adjournment, making it effective for June 20th of 2025. These actions will avoid any lapse in state government operations, although the budget did include the fiscal year '25 gap funding for main care cannot be dispersed until enacted on June 20th. There will be a delay for all of those receiving services, including our ambulance. The past budget have very, elements of very special importance to our city and school. There's $1.5 billion for K through 12 education, which is the essential programs and services funding that we receive. There's $265 million each of two years for state municipal revenue sharing. There is the $118 million for the gap funding for main care services, which is important to our ambulance service and our local hospital and such. And there's $20.3 million in there to support, for the support of county jails, which significantly reduces our county tax. So hang on to those elements in your mind as I go through this. There is an LD 210 as a placeholder, that's the supplemental budget. So the legislature opened their first special session on March 25th, so they adjourned on the 21st. They opened a special section up the following Tuesday on the 25th to resume the work on all the bills that hadn't been passed, the supplemental budget and such under that, which is now LD 210. What I'd like to make the public aware of is, also on March 25th, a group of current and former Maine lawmakers submitted an application to the Secretary of State for a People's Veto Referendum challenging the enactment of Public Law 2025, Chapter 2, which was printed LD 609, which is the baseline budget. By April 8th, the Secretary of State must provide the ballot question to the petition group for the start of gathering signatures. The petition group must gather 67,682 valid signatures and return them to the Secretary of State no later than the close of business, 5:00 PM on June 15th of this year. If the requisite number of validated signatures are collected, then the implementation of LD 609, the state budget, on June 20th, '25 will be placed on hold pending the referendum vote on November 4th, 2025. You might see where I'm going with this, right? All state budget expenditures will halt during that period of time if passed, the budget is, and if they pass, i.e. the budget is defeated, the legislature will then have to reconvene and draft and adopt an emergency budget. The timing of the enactment of such an emergency budget would be dependent upon obtaining a two-thirds majority or a simple majority for enactment of an emergency budget. So you're looking at a delay of six to 12 months in there. There's also not a provision for our state legislature to put an emergency budget in place in the interim period. There's a lot of holes in what we're dealing with. This is kind of a first. So, the public should be aware of the consequences of signing a petition and potentially governing by referendum. I'm not making a recommendation on either one of these, but the public should communicate to our legislators the need to better govern as the representative republic that our state is, lest we may be impacted by significant uncertainty. Loss of state EPS funding would be an increase to property taxation of 74% to cover that gap. Loss of state revenue sharing would be an increase to our property taxpayers of 20% to cover that gap. The awareness centers on governing by referendum versus the legislative body, which is duly elected to pass the state's budget by legislative actions, which is our representative republic. There are consequences for poorly implemented laws, and there are consequences for overriding the elected officials by referendum. Please be aware of what those consequences of your vote are for legislators, as well as for the possible vote by referendum, as both actions have ancillary actions upon each, so your vote matters. So, people need to be acutely aware of what they're moving forward with either of these. I'd encourage you, in the short term, to communicate with the legislators to put forward something that is more acceptable to both sides of the aisle, such that this kind of thing won't continue forward, so.
Thank you, Steve. Wow.
That was fire.
All right, now under communications and presentation, did you have any questions, Steve? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. I was just in such shock by what they were doing. All right, thank you. Communications and presentations, this is police promotion, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Chief Small.
Good evening. My name is Eric Small, I'm your police chief. Tonight, we are here to celebrate the promotion of one of our officers. The detail, please post. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to highlight the journey of Everett Allen, a dedicated officer who is committed to service and leadership. Everett began his career with us on August 6th, 2012, when he was hired as a police officer. From day one, he demonstrated an unwavering dedication to keeping our community safe. His investigative skills led him to a well-deserved assignment to detectives on October 6th, 2019. Everett's growth did not stop there. His leadership abilities quickly became apparent, and on August 1st, 2023, he was promoted to sergeant, while he guided his team in the patrol division. After a short time in patrol, Everett was transferred to the support services, where he was the sergeant in the mental health unit. Today, we proudly announce his most recent promotion to lieutenant, effective March 23rd, 2025. You will see Everett in uniform assigned to the day shift patrol. Lieutenant Allen's journey is a testament to hard work and an unwavering commitment to the citizens of Sanford. We look forward to all the continued contributions he will make to our department and community in this new leadership role. Police collar brass represents an officer's rank and authority within the department. Tonight, Lieutenant, tonight, Major Allen and Major Dyer will place Lieutenant Allen's collar brass on the collar of his uniform. The police badge, the police badge represents a dedication to upholding the law and protecting the community. It's a symbol of public trust and a promise to serve and protect. It is worn proudly by our officers as a visual representation of this promise. Pinning Lieutenant Allen's badge tonight is Deputy Chief Matthew Gagné. Please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Everett Allen, who has been promoted.
Mayor, you may now embarrass him. Would your family please come down and join you, so we can take some pictures and embarrass you? Do we have family here? Oh, excellent.
He does, he has a little baby.
Oh, if we could get the baby to cry, it'd be even better.
Wow, look at this.
Ann's going to take a picture of the family. Excellent. Okay. And the next presentation will be a presentation on the progress of the steering committee for the Sanford Comprehensive Plan.
No, you can keep that off.
Oh, it's off?
Yeah.
It's still on?
It was an update.
Okay, never mind. And...
Next time.
And public participation, and... And David, is this on the budget, or is this something else?
Um, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, come on down. And if you could introduce yourself and where you live, not your street address and stuff, just Sanford Springville.
Hello, my name's David Lahou, I'm from South Sanford. I wanted to speak in regards to the crosswalks that were anticipated for the traffic circle in South Sanford. And the, first of all, you talked about a raised crosswalk, which we have those same style of light crosswalks, one right over here at the town hall, and one down by Cumberland Farms. Neither one of those have a raised crosswalk. I think it's a bad idea, especially for a highly traveled road like that. Also, they were talking about decreasing the vehicle lane width by a foot or so, trying to steal valuable laneage. I mean, they went through a lot of effort to build those like they are. I travel them a lot, and they're appropriately the right size. There's plenty of room off the road for foot and bicycle traffic. They should develop the sides of the road for it instead. And I think that, you know, that would cover the safety aspects and the possibility of using those travel ways for the apartment houses that they're building down there, for that large complex down by the, behind the credit union. I think that's the route they should take. There are portions of sidewalk, all the way up to like where Taylor Rental is, and there's plenty of appropriate roadside there for development on the sharp side of the highway of their main street. And only to say that back in the 60s, 50s and 60s, the actual speed limit of 109 from where Taylor Rental is all the way to Wells used to be 70.
Whoa.
Really.
Whoa.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. I can't imagine going 70 down that road. Okay, and there are no public hearings? And moving on to the consent agenda, are there any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda? Chris, is this about the consent agenda, or is this about something else?
It was actually just a comment regarding the road striping.
Okay, go ahead, I'll wait on the consent agenda. Sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, I think I was a little delayed. I was just curious on who was responsible for the road striping out front of the Smithies? I know that recently, driving down there during the rainstorm, it's really hard to see the lane markings now, and I didn't know if that was a state or a city issue about getting those repainted.
Steve, do you, we know who does that, state or city? 109, state. Thank you, Chris. We'll check into that.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. And now for the consent agenda, are there any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, move on to old business. In order to adopt proposed amendments to Chapter 280 of the Sanford City ordinances for revision to subsection 280-11-9 Airport Development Zone, as well as corresponding revisions to subsection 280-11-10, 280-2-2, and 280-16-6. This item must be read on two separate occasions. I am so glad this is the second occasion. All right. Are there any questions? Can I have a motion, please? Ann?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
You don't want to read the whole thing again, and, no.
Do you want me to?
Pete, the second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Oh, glad that one's finally done. All right. And our new business, in order to take action on the FY '25-'26 municipal and school budgets, do I have a motion? And then I'm going to, I think we're going to hear, Steve, you're going to get some information for us?
Are there specific, are there specific motions we need to make on the budget?
All right. No questions? Can I have a motion, please? Maura?
I'd like to make a motion that, geez.
And don't forget the library, please, what we're going to do with that.
Yes, I will make that motion, sorry. The total, not both, right? Not to be raised by taxation? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2025-'26 municipal and school budgets, with the net to be raised by taxation in the amount of $41,752,101, with a notation that the funds for a good old library be held until such time as we have finalized a lease agreement and other issues with the Library Association for the use of the building, all the stuff we've talked about during the budget process.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second? Pete?
I'll second this.
All right. All those in favor? Ooh, any discussion first, sorry. Yes, Jonathan?
Just a point of clarification, I thought we voted to approve the budget at the last meeting. Was that just consensus?
It was consensus, yes.
All right, so this is the actual official?
This is the actual official. This is a sign on the dotted line. So all those in favor? Okay, that's one, two, three, four, five. And all those opposed? Two. Thank you. Moving right along, in order to sign the municipal warrant calling for the school budget validation referendum election to be held on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, at the polling location for Sanford and Springville voters to be opened at 7:00 AM and closed at 8:00 PM. Could I have a motion, please? Nate?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And a second, Pete?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. In order to accept and authorize a benefit proposal for Pacquinn and Carroll LLC for Maine Paid Family Medical Leave Insurance and opt out of the State of Maine PFML program, can I have a motion, please? Pete?
Motion to move, motion to move this forward.
A second?
A second, that.
Any discussion?
I would love it if we, you know, saw the different, like, let people know the process and the amount of savings that the school and the city are having because of this process.
Yeah, so we went through a competitive, well, first, we engaged, the city and school engaged in the dialogue together, because we have the same employer identification number, to explore options of staying with the state program, or was there any cost savings for us to go to a private insurance carrier for the same program that would meet the state criteria? School Department set that up with the insurance agent that's listed here, Pacquinn and Carroll LLC. Representative came in, and we looked at proposals from multiple vendors, the two of which was state and, yeah, Unum, there we go. Looked at those two proposals competitively, Unum was the most cost competitive, especially that the city already has business with them as well. Went through that and found the significant savings really is in the first year and a half of the implementation, because we've paid, we both, the city and school have paid in the first quarter of the year through the end of March, that was a state mandate and requirement to do so. If the council authorizes this action tonight, we'll take the competitive quote on doing the private insurance, we'll opt, and then we will file a waiver. We have to wait till April 15th, and we'll file the waiver to the state. I've already, we've already had communications with the state that they will accept that, because Unum is one of the state's authorized vendors for this implementation of the program. We would then get that waiver. We would not pay any fee for service into the program until such time as it's set to be implemented. So right now, it's supposed to be effective for benefits to be out May 1st of 2026, yes, 2026. So we would hold on our premiums until that point in time. There's also dialogue with the state that they're not sure if they're going to be adequately funded by that point in time, so they may have to wait until August of that year, so there'd be a further quarter of savings there that we have not projected. Based upon that deference of premiums and the multi-year quote, I only have the city's savings in here, I'd have to go back and look at the school numbers combined, but we save in the fiscal year that we're in right now, $20,307. In fiscal year '25-'26, we'll save $68,597 versus if we'd stayed with the state. And in fiscal year '26-'27, we'd save $5,440 in comparison. five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars in comparison with uh the state's one percent premium deduction. So there'll be a first, the three-year savings there of ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. School department had li- even larger savings than that because of the number of employees. They have significantly more employees than we do. So I can't state for you off memory what the combined savings was, but it was, it was significant part of our last budget amendments, uh, that were taking this into, into concurrent. So at the end of this three-year period, uh, if, uh, if the next series of quotes by Unum or other entities are not favorable and we want to go back to the state program, you can at that, that period of time, um, where we, we view that we don't know what the state's going to be doing with this a year from now, two years or three years from now. So we'll have the option of making that decision at the end of this three-year period that we've been quoted on. So I, I want to say it was a very good process. It was very beneficial for us to, to go into this research.
Madam Mayor?
Ann?
Well, I hate to ask a question, um, because poor Steve's coughing. Uh, I, is there any guidance on the premiums that were paid prior to April one? Are those refundable or no, those are lost? Sorry if you said that.
Those are lost.
Okay, thank you.
I know, uh, early in the process, um, Bath Iron Works was going to sue the state to try and, because they knew they were going to opt out and self-insure, but everybody had to pay the first quarter. So we've, we've completed that. The last payroll was the last time we'll take those deductions out, given the council's uh firm, affirmative action on this tonight. We'll stop taking, taking, uh, we won't start, we won't take those out again uh next week. Uh, and then we'll file for the waiver with the state, which we've been told will be granted, and then nothing until the, the program is actually implemented at that point in time.
All right. So we did a first and a second, so all those in favor? Thank you. In order to accept the criminal, criminal forfeiture in the amount of three thousand, fifty-eight dollars from York County Unified Court Doc Number CR twenty twenty-three zero zero five oh four, we have a motion, please? Nate?
So moved.
Ann?
I'd second that.
Any questions? Yes, you can speak. Perfect. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Chad Allen. I'm the major of operations with the police department. Um, I was asked to speak tonight to ask you to accept the forfeiture of the amount of three thousand, fifty-eight dollars. This money was seized during a traffic stop in May of twenty twenty-three, also seized at that time were twenty-four grams of crack cocaine, eighty-three grams of methamphetamines, and thirty grams of fentanyl. In addition to these drugs, other evidence and drug, uh, of drug trafficking was discovered by officers. The operator was subsequently arrested on drug trafficking charges, and the money was seized as proceeds of that illicit activity. The arrest is credited to Officer Archibau, uh, who was assisted by Officer Scott Jarrett, Officer Dan Shannard, and Officer Rick Buckland.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions? All right. I appreciate the report. Thank you very much. And thanks for your, the team's work on that. It's fantastic. All right. Can I, um, I think we already did a first and a second, so all those in favor of accepting this? Thank you. In order to approve the midtown mall maintenance assessment for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year, and who's, Michelle?
Yes, hello there. Good evening. So in your packet, you will find all the supporting documents for the um annual um midtown mall maintenance cost assessments, and this is going to be for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So included, you will see that the winter maintenance, which includes plowing utilities, which is your parking area, lighting, and general maintenance and repair, was included in the assessment. Um, I also provided you the information from Public Works on the breakdown of those figures, so you can see um exactly what repairs and maintenance has been completed on the parking lot, and then a snapshot of the last three years. So this is the, the third year in which, per the ordinance, the full sixty percent gets split amongst those three property owners. Um, you'll see the big difference as well between last year and this year, and that was because of the twenty-two thousand dollar capital improvement plan for the lighting that was done. So that um was just a one, one-time annual cost.
All right.
Any questions?
I'm just, I mean, is this working well with the partner private property owners? Um, do we have problems with assessments being collected?
I haven't, I haven't heard of, of any complaints or, or feedback from anyone.
All right.
No, since the district was put in place and uh really the starting implementation was about negotiating the, the phase in as well as the sixty, forty split, forty percent being retained by the city as far as they carrying those costs for, uh, you know, the other public use that's not associated with those properties.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. So we've already had a first and a second, so, right? I did that, didn't I? No.
I'll make a motion to approve the report with the associated costs.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the last on our list is a discussion of the municipal vehicle use. And Steve, who is doing this one?
I'll present on this. Um, so at, at a prior council meeting, there was a request as far as, uh, I guess it was a concern, or concerns have been expressed about the utilization of uh city vehicles that are, that are taken home. Uh, so in your packet, there's only one small section in the city's overall personnel policy that addresses this. It's section one twenty-two, Use of City Property in Business Activity. Uh, states that city vehicles and equipment shall only be used for the conduct of city business and conduct of job duties. Also in your packet is the list of assigned vehicles by department uh that go home. Um, and those, those are done so in order to facilitate response for after hours. So, uh, questions on it or discussion or?
Is there a way for that, for the public to see that?
Yeah, if, if Ben can, is the screen connected, Ben? There we go. Yep. So we are in the process of rewriting the personnel policy as well. We've already pulled some examples of uh language that's stronger than this, uh, than what we have in the city's policy now. Is there any concerns that you might express tonight or in the future? You know, we'll incorporate those in if you, if you think there's uh abuse or inappropriate utilization with these vehi- associated with these vehicles. Police Department also has a separate SOP that's pursuant to the MLEAP certification that governs utilization of vehicles as well.
Maura?
So, um, unfortunately, this is one of those areas that um people from the public pay attention when they see a Sanford vehicle exiting our community and going to someone's home. Um, it can, it can raise some feathers because they're paying the taxes that support these vehicles. I think the, um, and I didn't ask for this agenda item. So if we get something from a citizen, and I'm looking at this list, the vehicle that was mentioned is not on the, this list, um, but was seen being taken out of our community. Um, it was a vehicle with a plow on it and it is not, it was not a DPW employee driving it. The appropriate means for city councilors to inform you, and, and obviously, we're not always going to have the ability to say, you know, I have proof that, but to let you know, um, who this person saw and what kind of vehicle it was and what kind of um actions are taken. Because it was, it was definitely not a DPW person, but, and none of these other people other than the maintain, I guess, it wasn't the airport person, none of them should have had a vehicle going home with a plow on it. So, does it change sometimes, I guess? Does it, does what they're taking home change sometimes? And are they allowed to use a plow truck on their own driveways? And thi- this is what people legitimately ask me.
And in the past, I mean, if somebody sees a vehicle, it'd be great if they got the license plate, because we do have some people who own vehicles that look exactly like the one, the, with the one with the plow. We have somebody who has a truck exactly like that, only they don't have the emblem on the side. So people need to make sure it really is a city vehicle and not somebody who a- actually owns the, the exact vehicle. Um, so, and one of the reasons, one second, Jonathan, one of the reasons Maura is mentioning it, um, it, you need to either call me or call Steve, because we never mention people's names in public, you know, an employee. That would be very inappropriate. So that's why a call to one of, so what, what should our procedure be? To call and then Steve can check into it. So if you can't get Steve, because Steve's very busy, you can call me and I have multiple meetings with Steve, and I can bring that up um to him, so then we can check in and find out. Uh, so that would be appreciated because that way we stop it. And there are some, because if they take their vehicles home, and I think we've got them on here, right, Steve? Um, that if they take them home, it's for them to have that vehicle to go to an emergency, it's faster. So just remember that, we can tell people that, so they understand. Um, it saves time. So Jonathan?
Thank you. Um, so there's a couple of things. One, I had a question. Are all of the city vehicles clearly marked? I heard some reports that they're not all marked. They should. If they're not, if they just have municipal plates and they're not marked on the door or something, I would like to formally request that any city vehicles have a decal on the side of the door, so that they're clearly marked, so that it's obvious that it's a city vehicle, personal one. Um, one of my concerns is that if people, this is, I'm, I'm seeing this list and it's like fifteen vehicles. That's a lot of vehicles. And they're not cheap anymore. And we spend a lot of money every year for fleet maintenance. So I have concerns with people that, especially people that don't live in cities in Sanford, taking their, uh, city vehicle all the way to wherever they might live. Somebody might live in Lubin Inn or Acton, Shapley or wherever, that's adding a lot of miles. And our fleet maintenance is primarily based on mileage a lot of times, so this appears to be. So if we hit a hundred thousand miles on a vehicle, that's when we tend to be rotating these out. But I think we're adding, or potentially adding a lot of miles to these vehicles and they're getting replaced early. And um, I've had some conversations around the airport maintenance one, but I don't, you know, and, and I don't really have a problem with like the chief or the fire chief, but I think some of these other positions, we really should take a closer look at to make sure they really do need to have a vehicle for emergency use coming from their home as most. Um, uh, if, if you're working for a company, they'll expect you to drive your personal vehicle to work, and then you take the work vehicle to do whatever work-related functions you have. So, um, those are just a couple of points I had.
Ann? Um, it's my understanding that we, in essence, request some of these folks to bring these vehicles home at the convenience of us as their employer, being that it behooves us from a public safety standpoint, that they can respond more quickly. But Steve, could you speak to that and make sure I'm on the right path?
That's correct. So, um, I'm, I'm looking at the list to make sure I'm going to make this statement correctly. Yeah, there's, there's none of the employee, so the, the staff that are assigned these vehicles to take home is for the, for the overnight response and the immediate response for emergency situations. Nobody's getting a standpipe bay on this, right? Um, well, a detective would. But the, these are the individuals, so the airport's maintenance supervisor gets the call in, in the night, has to respond to the airport for the lights and such under that, has the tools and equipment to respond there immediately. Police Department, that's very obvious, those, they respond twenty-four seven, uh, when the calls come out, even when they're not on shift. Same thing with the, the three, the fire chief and the two assistant chiefs. Uh, in Public Works, uh, you have the department manager as well as the uh director. So, um, that's, that's, so when the call goes out in the night, police department says the roads are slippery and whatnot. The on-call supervisor has a, a unit with them. The on-call supervisor comes out, uh, does the assessment work, decides who to call in, is it just salting, is it salt plow and such under that. For those unexpected storms, for the storms that we know are coming, uh, we, we preset that with our staff as to when they should expect those calls. But all of the vehicles on the list are those vehicles that are assigned to people for that uh off-duty but on-call response.
And just to make it clear, when they bring that vehicle home, unless they're called out for something, it sits in their yard.
Correct.
And they use their own personal vehicle to travel around their community to go places.
Correct.
So, um, it's a necessity. And I remember multiple years ago, we had that discussion, and this was the list, oh, this was quite a while ago, that we came up with, uh, when, it was probably when we were doing the personnel uh book years ago, um, that this was the group that really needed to have their vehicles because they had to respond fast. And I noticed some of these vehicles, especially on the fire and the police, they're command vehicles. Um, so you've got the equipment to actually supervise an incident that's happening. So if they actually went from wherever their home is, all the way to the police department or the fire station, they might be passing the incident, which would take a lot longer than to co- come back with the right vehicle to man that um emergency. So, and we had long discussions about that. So I, for one, um, do not feel the need to micromanage this list, knowing the past history of all this. But I do believe that somebody taking their own plow home and plowing the yard is an issue, and that should not happen. Uh, but um, this list I have no problem with. Any, Maura?
One more follow-up. Um, so if someone's on vacation, do, does the command vehicle stay at the, say, police or the fire station for the potential use of someone who's, okay. So it doesn't stay in their yard for the week that they're on vacation, stays at the, so it can be used by other personnel? Okay.
Uh, Bob?
So I think this is a good uh check-in, uh, update. However, uh, we want to think about it, and uh, obviously, the use of municipal vehicles shouldn't be frivolous. Uh, it doesn't seem like it is or has been, uh, the majority uh of the time, but it, it's always good to take a look at these things. And I agree with what everybody's saying, that, you know, the, the, uh, well, we'll just pick on the chief of police, since he's sitting up in the, in the back of the hall here. If he has to respond to something at two o'clock in the morning, I'm sure, um, he's, he's not, he's going to respond to that much more quicker, much more effectively, if he can drive directly from his home uh to the incident and, uh, you know, not have to drive somewhere, pick up another car, uh, and so on. But I think it's a good check-in and a good update.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pete?
Yeah, as long as all the vehicles are marked on the doors, I, I have no issue with this list at all.
Okay.
That way it takes away any questions, because I got a couple of emails about, is this for personal, and I didn't know. So, that, I think that'll clean it up.
Okay. Jonathan, and then Chief?
Yes, thank you. Um, so it doesn't look like there's a lot of support for making any changes here. Um, I would like to request, like you mentioned about having their markings on the doors, um, and then at least looking into doing a mileage log, so that would be helpful, minimizing any extra unnecessary mileage.
All right. Chief Small?
Just did some donuts in my car out there.
Wait, you ate, you ate donuts or did donuts?
No, I was eating donuts and spinning some cookies in the back lot.
You are quite good for levity.
Just wanted to, just wanted to touch bases with all you guys, just, you know, especially Jonathan, to, just to have you maybe think a little bit differently. And I think you can put a blanket over this and fix the whole problem. You got to think about what's inside these vehicles. Um, tens of thousands of dollars worth of police equipment. You can't put a marking on the side of a police car that's driven by the staff members. It has twenty thousand dollars worth of stuff that I don't really want to talk about in them. You know, you don't want to identify a vehicle, what's in it, if it's in the Walmart parking lot, or wherever it is, you know what I mean? It's, it's a target. Um, it's not like a regular marked police car. Obviously, those are identified, but the staff vehicles for the police department and for the fire department, they're not identified. But I can... But I can speak mostly for the police department, but the fire department as well. They have tens, thousands of dollars' worth of fire and police equipment in them. Our equipment, a little bit different than their equipment. So I just ask you to think about that when you think about identifying police vehicles. Also, your police and fire chief, we live right in the community here. So if it's Saturday and I need to go somewhere, yeah, I am using the city vehicle. I'm not going to sit here and lie to you. But that is because I've also, I'm also responding to calls. If there's an accident, I don't drive by it. If I feel here the officer's busy, I go to a call. I'm always prepared to be, I speak, I say me, but really all the police staff personnel, always prepared to respond. The last thing you want is the police or the fire chief at Walmart in their POV, and there's a fire on 99. So Chief Susie, what's he going to have to do? Go to his apartment, grab his car? That really doesn't make any sense. So our police policy, which is the MLEAP standard, which is the standard throughout the state, does allow for limited personal use of the vehicle, just for that reason. Stuff you're talking about, the plow truck, that I have no knowledge of, really? Yeah, obviously, that, that makes sense. But if, if a citizen sees a police chief driving his vehicle on a Saturday or Sunday somewhere, all of our people live locally. You want them to be another officer, especially when we're down officers and we're short officers. I've been known to show up at calls prepared on a Saturday or Sunday, just because I'm out there. So that's the big thing. It's a multiplier as far as response goes. The police department responds to 92% of all calls received by the Sanford Communication Center. So if you really think about that, 300,000, 100,000 calls a year, we're going to 92% of them. The more officers we can have out there, the better. So my staff, again, I can't speak for the fire department, we're not just behind our desk. We are out there. We are responding. I'm encouraging our staff members to get out from behind the desk, go out on calls, be available, and help the officers. So you can't just toss a blanket on this and think that it's going to solve all problems. Like, I would share, the city manager has a copy of our MLEAP policy. It's pretty strict. Our detectives shouldn't be out picking up hay in their vehicle, you know, stuff like that. Personal use like that is not acceptable. If they got to run down to the market to grab some milk, you want them to have that so they can just respond. So there are varying levels of what is acceptable and what is not. And I would ask that you trust that the management of the department is handling that appropriately. I certainly wouldn't stand for anything but professionalism and respect of the vehicles. Our vehicles that are assigned to officers, they're really, going to your maintenance issue, they're really well taken care of. They get oil changes when they're due. They, you know, driven by one person, and they're in really good shape. They're going to last probably 10 years. And same goes for the fire department. Their chiefs, they need to respond in the same way. So I know sometimes citizens can get concerned and see that, but they can just call me. They can call the mayor or call the manager. There's 99.9% of the time, a really good reason why the officer's driving their vehicle on a Saturday or Sunday or in the evening. And it's, it's for the safety of the citizens of Sanford. You don't want me to be at a big box store and have an emergency in it and have no equipment. Everything I have, command vehicle, that's because everything that we need to run, and I mean everything. I encourage you to come out and look in the car right now after this, if you'd like. Everything we have to run a scene is in that vehicle. If there's an emergency, if there's shooting, Lord forbid, or anything like that, it's all available. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you. I understand your concerns. But you have my phone number. If you think it's one of our officers, just give me a call. And we'll always do the right thing. Thank you.
Eric, don't go away. I, I just want to praise you for your wisdom, as always.
My wife told me to say all that.
Okay. Well, we figured she did. So we didn't want to point out the obvious. I didn't even. I didn't even think about the decals and shouldn't be on certain vehicles. And I agree because though, it's very expensive equipment inside there, and you guys would be a target. Also, for the, the fire department, the exact same thing. We really don't want to, I don't know, I don't, in your command vehicles, are there decals on the side of those? I didn't think so. I know because of the presentation, there's a lot of equipment, you know, in those vehicles too. So I would have to agree that it's probably better to let the people who are in management handle those situations and those decisions, along with Steve.
Yeah, there. I, I can think of the one, the one public, the newest, that Peter Smith drives, the newest Ford F-350 that's kind of a dark maroon color, the decal. The last time I saw that was not on that, that yet, so.
Yeah, okay. And doesn't, doesn't one of the people have the exact same vehicle? Yeah.
Your emergency response vehicles, I mean, the fire department's, they got $90,000 to $100,000 piece of equipment there, and ours are $80,000 piece of equipment.
Right.
Very expensive stuff inside there.
He doesn't have his hand.
You know, it's locked up inside there, but, so smashing grab is, would be limited, but it's still inside there. And you, like you said, a target. You want to be the last person seen in an emergency, in our scenario, not as a marked unit or a uniformed officer. But, you know, you want the element of surprise, I guess, in many ways.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I would, I would indicate that in the rewrite of the personnel policy that we're doing right now, I think this is one of the sections that I'd like to have a significant amount of more language into it other than, you know, city business and conduct of job duties only. That's not enough to stand on. The, the more detail I have, the easier it is to implement, so.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we'll bring that forward for you.
All right. And Matt, do you have a comment to make too? I see your hand, it's up. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Pete's vehicle is relatively new, but very similarly, he does have some equipment in that truck. Very similar to the on-call supervisor. Is it the same or relevant equipment to police and fire? No, but it is also a frontline response vehicle.
Okay, thank you. And, and again, that would probably be up to management to make those decisions. But I feel very comfortable turning this over to Steve and the department heads and coming up with a plan and handling that. Does everybody feel comfortable with that? Just give me, I don't think we have to vote, just a thing.
All I would say is like, if there are changes coming forward, I think either property or public safety can be the review authority for the city council. I don't think it needs to necessarily come in for the full city council because I'm sure there are times where it is important the city council weigh in only because we deal with the public perception. So I do think it's, it's good to have some input. I don't think it needs to be seven people all the time. But I've been doing this for about 20 years, and this, this comes up as a regular item, and I think it's healthy. It's a good, healthy discussion.
And it informs the public of why. You're even bringing up the decal thing. I didn't even dawn on me. There's a good reason why some of them shouldn't be labeled. So that also helped give us that information. So thank you very much for bringing this up, Jonathan. I appreciate it.
And, you know, there's some that shouldn't be and some that apparently aren't that maybe should be.
Yeah, okay, great.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne?
Madam Mayor, just in this line of discussion, I'm often asked why we have fire trucks at Hannaford in particular. And I've had to explain to folks the same exact thing. So it just bears mentioning here as well that when we see our apparatus within our community at places like Hannaford or in the future, maybe Shaw's on that end of town, it's because they're prepared to leave Hannaford at a moment's notice if, if a call comes in and go directly to that site. So they're, they're not going to leave the apparatus in the garage when they're purchasing, you know, having to run out for an errand. And just want to mention that as well. It's kind of the same line of thinking.
Thank you.
Because when we went to the Shaw's open house, they talked about how much the, the fire department and the police department were in there, sounded very food-related. So I do think they come and get lunch there or they, you know, they're, they're in there as much as anybody else is because it is a good place to grab like a salad or something like that during the day. So they seemed very familiar with the gentlemen and women from the fire department and the police department. It was cute.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Jonathan?
I'll just add a comment that, you know, I've, I've received feedback around apparatus at different stores and things, which I understand if they are going by and need to get some stuff for the kitchen or whatever, but I just want to make sure we're cognizant of the hours and mileage we're putting on extremely expensive equipment. It does need to get replaced occasionally. And we don't have to roll bigger equipment and somebody can just go on a pickup truck or SUV.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We don't have to vote on anything with that. So let's move right along. Are there any comments from any of the councilors? Pete?
Yeah, Cooper Flag's playing this Saturday. Support Maine basketball.
You and my brother would get along quite well. He's been obsessed. He went to Duke for his MBA, and he, now with his Maine student, he's been completely obsessed with Duke basketball this year and is enjoying it.
Are you telling me Joe's already bought a Cooper Flag?
Oh, Joe's obsessed. He's, he's having a great time. And when he was at Duke for his MBA, he actually was part of a group that they would have to, you'd have to camp out to get tickets for Duke basketball games. And he had a lot of fun around that when he was there. So it's, he, he's having a great time. And Cooper Flag is an amazing player to watch, and it's, it's, it gives you a lot of pride to know that he is from the state of Maine.
Oh, yeah, he's a generational talent, so it's kind of nice to watch it.
It is, yeah.
All right. And no other comments? So let's move on to any agenda items. And please remember, you can always text me or email me, and we can get those on if you need stuff. So I appreciate the input. So this meeting is now adjourned.